Y'all please stand safely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the Lincoln County Commission Regular Session January 2nd, 2014, in room 1 of A, the Lincoln County Courthouse. Members President Darryl Baker-Clark, Charles Vance President, Charles McCain Commissioner, Carrie Matthews Junior Commissioner. The meeting is called to order by Mary Napper, and I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular session of the Lincoln County Commission meeting that was held on December 19th, 2013 at 10:00 a.m.
I'll move.
I'll say. You're not, yes? Yes.
The next on the agenda is the appointment of the President of the Lincoln County Commission for the calendar year 2014.
I'll move we appoint Carrie Matthews.
I'll say.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. opposed? No? Noted that Mr. Matthews is now our President, I believe.
Next on the agenda is to set the date and time of the Lincoln County Commission meetings for the calendar year 2014. No, no, this is for our meeting.
That's for the holidays right there.
So, I'd like to go first and third of each month. You all six o'clock?
Six o'clock by 3:00?
Yeah.
Our motion, we go ahead and set the meetings on the first and third Thursdays of each month at 6:00 p.m.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Occasionally, I think we should consider having 10 o'clock meetings just for people who's in the courthouse, just a matter of other people who might not have access to the evening.
Yeah, I think we could, I mean, I think that'd be a good idea.
Works in your schedule, I think.
We'd probably work that in schedule as we go.
Yeah, because you're gonna have those holidays that are in the morning too, thanks to Christmas.
All those in favor?
Yes, yes.
All opposed? All right, next order of business, set the holidays for the Lincoln County Courthouse for the calendar year 2015.
These are from the state, you know, from the, so I just.
Our motion, we second, that's presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Now, we're at public comments, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? Not hearing anyone. We'll move to our next line item, which is the discussion of concern of possible action. Darryl Baker-Clark.
Thank you, congratulations, Mr. President. We have some voter roll issues, I'm thinking we need to take care of sooner than later. You guys all know it's been my mission to kinda straighten these things up and fix the problems that I see in them, so we have, we need to update Hamlin and West Hamlin in the voter rolls, and what we have, the city limits, their town elections, we have 14, right now in Hamlin, we have precinct 14, and that's what we provide to town. Some of the people in 14 is not in city limits. We need to provide the town with accurate voter rolls, just the people that live in the town, so we need to add like a suffix to the end, whether it be an A, a B, to the end of that precinct, and this will, that way we can just, we can separate 14 from the, well, the city limits from the regular precincts. We're gonna have to get some extra help in here to work on voter rolls, and there's also some issues with redistricting. I'd like to try to work on when I have these people in here, I guess, more bankrupt. We have issues at Little Hearts and Ranger, Mud River, Duval, Big Ugly and Hearts. Of course, we have, you know, the Tony Curd issue that we need to resolve sooner than later. This is from, I've got a figure here from February through June, for, I'd like to hire three employees to work on all these issues. Of course, I'll take care of the issues in the two cities or the two townships we have in the county. That's something that we need to do. We have, I have a copy of the code that says that the county clerk's office is responsible for keeping accurate voters' registration list for the two townships. If anybody wants to look at that, it shows that we're responsible for those.
Darryl, you wanna work on this from February through June?
I would like to, and the reason, I'm thinking that we're probably gonna need three employees to do it, we have to go in and actually pull each individual voter up that's in precinct 14 and put a, something to signify where they're going at, whether they're gonna be town or out of town. So, it's, you know, it's gonna take some manpower to do that.
Is that three hours a week?
Plus, we got election, you know, it's essentially now for us. I mean, I know it's the 13th, but there's something going on, you know, starting, you know, next week on the voters' calendar, the guide.
Is it, are you gonna need them, is it full-time or part-time?
What I figured was full-time. I just figured, I figured it as each employee would cost with matching FICA, which we have to pay, it's $8,396.70 per week, is what's figured out as full-time, and it's gonna be, you know, just be a temporary worker, like much like we did for the, what we had in the summer.
Is that, I mean, that's $8,000, that's for from February through June, or is that?
Yeah.
That's for one worker, so you're talking $24,000.
Yeah, it's $25,190 for three employees, that's about the size. As for, we're kinda required to provide them with accurate voter rolls, with boundaries included. I already spoke with Alan Holder, and he said that he could get with us, and he's already had, he already has the map, the actual maps for the two towns in the system, the same one that holds for the other precincts, and it's, it's gonna be fairly easy as far as that distinguishing where, you know, what person goes where, it's just a matter of getting in there and getting each individual person and putting them where they need to go, and.
I would like to, I mean.
I have, I have, I'm gonna go to the meeting at West Hamlin, the town meeting in West Hamlin on the 7th of January. I tried to get hold of Hamlin, this meeting come on just kinda quick this month, so I haven't got a hold of Hamlin yet. I tried to get ahold of them today to see when their meeting was, but I already got put on the agenda at the 7th meeting over in West Hamlin to explain to them exactly what we're gonna be doing. I think they're kinda used to getting, like, down here in Hamlin, there'll be a precinct 14 and precinct 13 in West Hamlin, that'll all fit. But it'll be as much as, what boils down to precinct 14 will still be precinct 14. If there's an A or B on the end of it, doesn't matter. When it comes to our election, whether you have an A or a B, you're still gonna vote in precinct 14. It's just, we have to distinguish what members that are in precincts wanna vote at the city, for the city elections.
I would, I think, we're gonna have another meeting on, I think, the 16th of this month. I would like to just look at what the budget, look at our budget and see where we wanna, where we can pull the money from. I mean, but as, I mean, I don't have a problem with this, and I mean, I don't know about Doc, speaking for Doc or Charles, but just, I, 'cause I would just like to look, you know, where we can pull that money, but I don't have a problem with it at all.
I think, you know, we need three, I think, because it is an election year, we may be able to do it less if it wasn't an election year, but I think we need three to go through it, because.
I understand where you're at.
We have one employee down there, and she's obviously gonna be busy with setting up the election, the primary.
Can I ask a question? When it comes to certifying candidates, you don't have any role in the town election, because.
Canvassing is taken care of by.
No, as a candidate, I mean, to certify a candidate. If I wanted to run, and I lived close to the city limit, do I come to you or do I go to Jennifer at the Town Hall? Because as much as it's an issue for the voters that you're talking about, it's also an issue next week when the candidates file for council, mayor.
I would imagine when they file, that they check with 911 to see if they fall within.
Okay, themselves.
Yeah.
Okay.
The city is the governing body of that election, so.
The recorder, I guess.
But we're still required to provide voter rolls to them.
Okay.
And accurate voter rolls.
And that's what you're, that's what we're shooting for, as accurate as possible.
It's basically the way it is right now, there's people that live outside the town, the district, I mean, the municipality that can't vote in town elections. I mean, basically, that's.
Well, you have poll workers, you have poll workers there, I guess, that are picking and choosing.
Yeah.
Because they're just, they're looking at the address and they're saying, well, yeah, that is, they're making a determination.
This way, we know for sure.
This, yeah, this is something that should've been done a long time ago to take care of that, it'll zero in on, but just like our other precincts, it'll put you in the right precinct, wrong or right, whether you feel like you're wrong or right, it'll put you in the right one.
So, we're just gonna put that.
I think we'll just table, can we have table to the next meeting? What do you think, that'd be great?
Our motion, we table it, you just have it on the next agenda.
I second. Any discussion, any discussion? All those in favor to table this item for the next meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Next, next order of business is laptops, electric, cell phone bill for the interim office in Allen Creek. Whenever, I was talking to you all last time about the, the spot that we have over in Allen Creek for the sheriffs, two deputies, and for the tax, for tax day, I was under the impression that the electric and telephone would be provided, but it, basically, I was missing that, all right? And probably just to the fact of I didn't get all of the details, I was assuming that whenever we had some of the bills that were paid for, such as trash and things like that that were provided, that the electric and telephone would also be provided, but it's not. And there is also an issue that the sheriffs, they need a laptop to go into that office to take there, and if you'll see, I think it's, it's in your, it's in your packet, the laptop is $765.10. So, I know that we approved to have the office there, but during the approval, I said that the all expenses would be paid, okay? All the bills would be paid, and that's not necessarily the case. So, I would like to have this put before the commission and see if the electric and phone bill and the laptop, if we could go ahead and do that. If not, we'll have to relook at that, what we're doing there. But you're looking at, as far as our electric and phone, I don't think that with, looking at our electric bills in other places across our county, the different offices that we do have, it's not gonna be very expensive at all. And of course, phone would be used because of cell phone service there.
You'll be, they have like a separate laptop, they take the Harts and one to McCorpol?
Yeah, they do, and that was, the problem is, is getting back and forth, the laptops back and forth.
What's, that's what I was gonna say.
The logistics behind this.
She just, one on Wednesday, Sarah takes up, and then she wouldn't be able to get it to Amanda to go Thursday morning, so they needed, they wanted to. They don't have, you had asked me, they don't have one for McCorpol and one for Harts, they have one that they share, but where the McCorpol goes on Monday versus.
And it's even farther from Harts.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they have first act on that.
But if, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the laptop, electric, and phone bill for the interim office. And note that this is interim, I think this is not something that we decided that it's gonna be something that's gonna be long-term. We were just gonna, we, we had some cell phone over there with Farmers Market, and we'll have office space there, and I think that's something that we're looking at, kind of moving there.
I'll make that motion.
Then I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Next order of business is the Bluegrass Gospel Festival, and I know this is on the agenda, Doc, would you elaborate on this?
Well, I think our last meeting, Mr. McCain brought him, I'll just have him go ahead and tell us what he did at that time as far as, and we have to put on the agenda this time, but I think we stored that, he added some value to what was being done.
Yeah, I'm just afraid if I was asked at that meeting, if y'all had to make that decision, and I just, last week that we, our last meeting, that we reviewed this again before we forget about the importance of it, I guess, and Mr. Gayheart had asked on behalf of the festival for the $15,000 that we had been given previously, and it seems like to me that, in my view, that it's certainly good for Lincoln County, it brings people in here, they may spend some money, but basically, one of those things that we set out of the commission years back to provide something for the people, not only just to say, you know, we've got a great lake here, we've got a great county, but people who had lost their farms and things like that, give them a place to come back to and feel proud of, and so we come up with trying to do something, we came up with this idea of a festival of music, and end up trying, on Saturday, do the bluegrass, and Sunday, gospel, and so with that, we think it's been successful. Parks and Rec people have, you know, worked with us in getting these things done, done a lot of the work, parks putting up camps and cleaning up some of those kinda things, helping with parking and things, so I just felt like it, we should review that and revisit this as a commission and provide that money. The thing I think we should do is go down, through the spring, if we get into budget time, we should probably consider is looking at the franchise fee and giving Parks and Rec the franchise fee, and then ask, maybe let them start taking care of this, but give them enough money to do it with, but giving them the franchise fee, which is about $70,000, but we can deal with that in March. But I would offer a motion at this time to provide the $15,000 for the Bluegrass Gospel in June.
I'd like to see if we could have, I'd like to see how much money we have in our Parks and Recreation, and if they have the money in Parks and Recreation, then have the Parks and Recreation go ahead and fund that, without our account.
Well, it would be insufficient unless we give them the whole 70, I think.
What's that?
I said, it would be insufficient this time unless we increase their amount from $50,000 to $70,000. We're collecting $70,000 in franchise fees, $72,000 maybe, and we have their budget limited to 50 at that time. If you agree to put their budget at $70,000, then they could handle that as well as efficient terms. So, that's two things that we have done as a commission.
I think we have, what's the mean, like, we have $24,000 in fairs and festivals, we could pay this out of the fairs and festivals.
Well, if it's.
Yeah, I'm not concerned about where it comes from, I'm concerned we get paid.
Well, what I'm saying is, is I mean, what I would like to try to handle it is not as a contribution, to try to handle it as, try to handle it as something that is through our fairs and festivals or through a specific entity.
Well, and.
And not look at it as a, as a contribution.
I understand, and it should be one of those things.
Well, I can, you know, I think your motion basically asks for us to approve the money, and then we could let the President decide on where he gets it from.
Yeah, and we, and we march on the budget.
Right, I mean, you know, because that's, that's one of the things, I mean, how long's this thing been going on?
Right, right. I think, I think that's.
Been going on 10 years, and, you know.
Well, we need to get, like Charles said before, we need to get it into the group that's working with those type things.
That's right.
And not have us determining this.
And the only thing I wouldn't even worry about now as much, I'd worry about later probably, but now is, in order to book people in June, Mr. Gayheart needs to have that information now, are we gonna have this, so I can go ahead and get people under contract?
Right, I understand exactly as well.
Well, I'll go ahead and second Mr. McCain's motion.
All right, is there any further discussion?
So, the motion again, what was it? Just the provided.
Provided, and like I said, the President will decide on what we give.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. And the next order of business is unfinished business, possible action, written ballot, not yet.
Brian did not update tonight, so he went home before the snow hit, but I'm here. Just a couple of things. One is, at the last meeting, we closed out phase four, even though we had that $16 thing that we dealt with. So, now we're in phase five, so I would, I'd like to ask the commission to loan us $30,000 again, that we would put in phase five and we would keep it until we got close to June 30th. We repay it so that the commission could balance its books, and then come July 1st, we ask for it again to tide us through to the end of the election.
That's what we've done every time.
Yeah, since we started phase two.
Go ahead, motion.
Our motion, we do that for Rick, give the $30,000.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I'll say aye.
Thank you, appreciate it. I wanted to give you a little bit of an update on the Harts Community Center, Mary and I have been working on this, all this DEP stuff that we've got going on there, and Jimmy Casdorff, who is the county sanitarian, Lincoln County County Sanitarian, he feels that we could do an in-ground system at Harts, which would mean that we wouldn't have to have an NPDES permit, and an in-ground system would be a cheaper kinda system. So, he and I went out and looked at it today. In order to move this forward, though, we would have to get somebody out there to dig an observation hole and do some perk tests, and then that, if everything worked out, we design bid specs, we do an advertising, you know, we have an award, award bid, we would get a performance bond, and I'm willing to help with this, but the rub is, it's getting to be, getting to be more time consuming, that I feel like I can just do as a volunteer, and I can't charge phase five with this work. So, I was, I'm coming forward to the commission, my guess is to get us to the point where it's bid out, it's ready to go, we're looking at maybe 40 to 50 hours, we're not looking for a hold. So, I wish, if the commission will be willing to, you know, pay me the hourly wage for that and mileage, get Harts taken care of.
Well, I think that's, you know, I don't, I don't know of anyone in the business that has one of you.
This area, I have no input other than what, if I, if Rick needs help, my help is, but I can't, I don't know how to do this at all, so.
And we're working together, so.
Yeah, I don't know who to call.
You recommended that perk test.
Yeah, well, you may have, 'cause I have no idea.
We're gonna gather some boots to come up to about there.
Right, well, JJ did buy me mud boots for Christmas, so I don't know that one. I have no clue on this.
Your motion.
Yes.
I'll go ahead and motion, we go ahead and pay for the time that's required for to do that for Harts.
I'll second that, now, we're still talking, you're getting it ready, we'll make a bid package.
Well, yes, what we will do is we'll figure out exactly what system is gonna work, design a bid package, get that ready, and then bid it out, and.
Somebody else will come and execute the perk test.
Somebody else would do the perk test and do the observation hole, but I think it's important that, you know, somebody's there while this is all going on, and making sure it's done right, we don't want it to be something that we have to go back and redo. We've had some experience.
So, there's a, there's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
All right, is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll, thank you, you're welcome. My partner and I will work on this.
Yes, the partner, thanks, yeah.
Hopefully, by the next meeting, we'll have some, something a little definite, a little more definite.
There you go, new business.
I'm sorry, I've got all these papers scattered.
Is there a, a motion to approve the new business? Have you all seen the new business? Is there a motion to approve all new business?
Our motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Commission, Consumers, and Communications, Mr. McCain.
I don't have anything right now.
Charles Vance? Oh, my turn.
Oh, sorry.
No, let, yeah, go ahead. It's what you're in now.
That's what you're in now.
I'm sorry.
I just wanna say, we had a member of Lincoln PSD that passed, Rudy Thomas, and I know that in the new business, we're gonna be advertising for that position, I just, Rudy was a good friend of mine, and I think he's a friend of a lot of people, and I just wanted to say that whenever we put him on the, on that board, I thought he did a fantastic job with his, and just a good person, be around, and I just hate that we have to go through this, causing the circumstances. Want to go ahead and tell you that I talked with AT&amp;T, and there have been some movements with AT&amp;T with their personnel, but the lady that I talked to, the new person that is over, that we will be working with for our tower situation, I talked to her today, and she was very, very committed to getting this, this, the equipment on this tower, giving us all the information we need so that we can apply for fund, for funding for the tower, and I think this is gonna be something that, that we're gonna be able to stretch across the county. Other than that, I think our Farmers Market's coming along, the Lincoln EDA's done a bang of a job on that, they've been, you know, getting out some bylaws, talking to some farmers in the area, they've been working with Farm Bureau, fortunately because of the weather, the Farm Bureau meetings, but it was canceled this evening, but, but it looks like that things are moving along, and hopefully, we can get this thing, we can get this thing set up and rolling there at Allen Creek, and we can just go ahead and continue across the county, and I think that's the thoughts and the plans of the Lincoln EDA, and I think that we're gonna see this gonna support a ton of business. Seems like this is the kind of the model that, um, the Agricultural Commission wants to go with, and that's what he's been talking about, is having distribution centers. And, uh, it looks like that with our farm to school and with, um... With this farmers market selling individually, that we'll probably bring a pretty good boost to our economy to a lot of people. But, uh, that's all I have. You, Doc, thanks.
Well, I just wanted to, uh, you know, thank my fellow commissioners for helping me over the last year of serving as your president. It was, uh, really a learning experience. It was, uh, something that I think all commissioners should do. Because you really don't, I don't think, understand how much you have to do as president till you become president. And then, once you do, you realize how much you have to rely on your other commissioners to make those decisions. So it's not just you figuring something out and doing something, you know? It has to be all of us working together, and I spoke with commissioners before we came in and told them that I look forward to working with them in the future as one of the commissioners. Uh, you know, there's... We've been trying to do things here in the courthouse to make the courthouse a little better place to work, trying to make it a little more, uh, in the mainstream as far as how business is conducted and things like that. And I think we've done that in a lot of areas. But I would want to say that, you know, the decisions I made, probably one of the best was hiring Mary, because it would've been really tough getting through this year without her learning as I learn and her being to apply what she already knew with what she was learning. So it's really been... It's really been good working with her, and I'm sure that President Matthews will find the same thing I did is that she does her work with a commitment that you don't see a lot. So I do appreciate your help, and I do, as I said, I appreciate all the other elected officials and what they've done to try to help me during that period of time, and I look forward to continuing to help these people in this county and make it a better place to live. That's all I have.
I think it's important that we do... Thank Commissioner Vance for carrying out the duties of the president. I think his job is a very important job, but I've enjoyed working with him. I can see us anything accomplished, and appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Johnson, my partner.
Listen, if that's all we have, um, do you have a motion, John?
Absolutely.
Second.
There's no other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it.
On the sixteenth.
The motion again on the sixteenth.